I guess that's all. That's all students, those experts. Take over your time. Of course, this company, uh, hopefully will have told you about that. Football's football. You know. That's it. Okay. Yeah. All right. It's like on the football. It's just. You got to. You know. You know. I don't know. I'm gonna do it. I don't know. Yeah. Yeah. Seriously. If you think my girl better than me, then I want.
We're saying.
Yeah. 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 Seriously. If you think my girl better than me, then I want.
First thing.
What? What? Yeah. Okay. Yeah. 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 So. Uh-uh. I don't mean to make you. So we make it today. We have a. Yeah. Sorry. My head is. I was. I'm sorry. I'm. 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 I don't. 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 My heart is. Every day. I know. I don't know. You know, about two months. And I was just. Easy. I. I've got two girls in my life. I don't. 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 I've got two girls in my life. I don't. 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 She got. 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 She did. 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 She went after the. Her book. Her. I don't know. I don't know. I don't. 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 And then we just. I don't. 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 I don't.
I'd like to call it all over this meeting of the Mercer County Board of Education. Uh, Mr. Booder, over please.
Good evening, District One, Amber Franceski.
Here.
District Two, Larry Jacob.
Here.
District Three, Billy McGurran.
Here.
District Four, Cliff Prue.
Here.
District Five, Randy Phelps.
Here. It's time now for our pledge of allegiance.
So this evening, if everyone will please stand, uh, we've got a fifth grade student, Lev Phelps, is gonna lead us in the morning pledge of allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, unuttered, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you very much. May I please add a motion to approve tonight's agenda?
Later.
Mr. Montgomery with the motion may have a second.
Second.
Mr. Prue with second, I'll say. Okay, up next are our recognition issues.
So tonight, uh, we've got our four Dairy Queen, we call them Dairy Queens because they've helped us with the Superior Titan Award, uh, winners in the last couple of years. When you get a free blizzard, uh, by winning, uh, the Superior Titan Award winner. But the Dairy Queen Superior Titan Award is for perfect attendance during last month. Uh, completed all their hallmark assignments and their tests. They've been making passing grades, of course, on everything and have no discipline issues. They demonstrate great leadership skills and they exhibit a winning attitude and spirit toward learning and their peers, who has a great honor to win this award for the Superior Titan Award from each school. Each month, uh, one person's picked out of, uh, out of all the student body of each school. So again, congratulations to each. You put a plaque up here and then a sticker that says, "My child is a Superior Titan Award winner for the parent." And then tomorrow, I'll come around or the next day, one of the next two days, I'll come around in your class and get you a, a certificate for a free blizzard of your choice. So at this time, our first Dairy Queen Superior Titan Award winner, uh, from, from last month is Mercer County Elementary School student, Briggs Lee. Briggs Lee. I'll take a picture. Photo op.
Right over here. Good job.
Good job, Briggs. So our Superior Titan Award winner for the intermediate school is Lev Phelps. Our Superior Titan Award winner from King Middle School last month is Olive Frisbee. And our Superior Titan Award winner from the senior high school is Izzy Cartt. We were gonna recognize our state championship track team this, uh, this month, but they're all in practice tonight in different sports. So, uh, we've got a lot of sports and games going on tonight, so we'll get those in November. Is that right, Mr. Page? Okay, we'll get those in November. We'll recognize them from there.
Thank you very much. Um, if anybody wants to go, there's a backdrop on the back wall. If you'd like to take your own pictures, you're certainly, uh, welcome to do so. I'm gonna have you then right now. Uh, we'll take about a couple of minutes recess. You're more welcome to come back to the board meeting or you can head on out if you want to. Okay, we will go ahead and continue. Uh, we had one side for public participation, so it's now time to start our reports. And first up is our five minutes.
Okay. Our ending general fund cash balance for the month of August was 6.73 million as opposed to 5.39 million last year at the same time. Our overall revenue increased seven percent compared to the prior year at the same time and most seeds at this point in time were up 25% compared to the prior year at the same time. Again, we're in this weird transition. I mean, even today, uh, we have some grants that are closing out September 30th and I'm doing journal entries to, um, journal entries and modifying invoices, that kind of thing to get those closed out. I'm not really sure what's going on tonight. Um, I'm trying not to be too loud, I promise. Okay, there we go.
Turn it up to.
Okay.
There we go.
I'm not gonna touch it yet. Okay. So, anyway. Gosh, it's very loud, sorry. I'm just gonna stand away from the podium. So I'm doing a lot of the journal entries, modifying invoices, that kind of thing to get those, uh, grants closed out. Uh, so all of that is affecting that ending balance for last year at this point in time because whatever, um, you know, if we end up moving an expense that had been in general fund and now it's moving into a grant to close the grant down, obviously your ending general fund cash balance is gonna be higher than it was. So just be aware that this is kind of a moving number until our audit is complete, the financial statements are complete and all of that is due to the continuing program of education by November 15th. But we normally wrap it up by the end of October. So that's why some of those numbers look a little bit wonky compared to what they normally do. On the expense side, those are up nine percent compared to prior year at the same time and in August, our expenses were 1.75 million, which is on the higher side, but of course that's our first month with all payroll coming back into it, all of our employees sort of getting paid in the month of August. And then again, we're paying a lot of, um, contracts for the first time and that kind of thing in the month of August. So those expenses are always a little bit higher in that month. Any questions?
That's good.
Okay. Thank you very much.
Next, our attendance report.
Good evening. Uh, we have a good attendance report, more like what we're used to seeing in the past, so makes for a happy. Uh, but attendance is looking better, 95% for the first month. So that is what we'd like to see, especially at the start of the year. So in the winter, if we, if it's hard on us, we know we've got some good attendance in the beginning of the year. The elementary school with 96% at the beginning of the year, that was amazing. So, um, we are working hard to share some information with parents about, um, our goals for students to have an A for attendance, which is a 95% for the year, which is the equivalent of two absences for the, for the month. So if kids miss about two a month, you end up with about 95%. So we're kind of trying to share that message with families. And some of the schools are doing some really good things to promote positive attendance. So we're working on distressing some of that positive, you know, reasons why you need to be here, rewarding kids, um, you know, for, for making that perfect attendance, if you're a perfect attendance for two weeks or a month, things like that, trying to make it attainable. So appreciate what they're doing to try to bring that to the forefront too. So any questions about that or the enrollment report?
Yeah, I wanna give kudos. I saw the social media post yesterday.
Yeah, we're gonna try to share that a little bit as much as it is now, just to keep it, get, get back in the very good thing. So, you know, get back to the norm. Thank you all.
Thank you.
You know, Ms. Johnson's here and I would like to say, uh, congratulations on being number one last month at 96.22.
Ain't behind you this day. We went back to.
Okay, well, congratulations.
It won last.
I was gonna say.
It won last.
Consider your age group, that's outstanding.
It won last.
But again, as a district, 95.34%, there is many, many, the school districts in the state that would trade, uh, attendance percentages with us. That's good.
Up next, personnel report. Uh, I think I was having a chance to look at that. She got your agenda earlier. So with that, we can move on to our high school principal report. Mr. Page.
So before he starts, uh, each month, each semester, uh, I've asked each principal, uh, they'll have their, their board meeting of their month to, uh, be assigned and just give us a big brief of, of a kind of snapshot of what's going on in the, the life of their school. And, uh, we're gonna start with the high school, work backwards, yeah, with the little kids. Uh, so we'll have a high school this month, then we'll go to King Middle School and, uh, down to the elementary by December, and then we'll start back over next semester. So each semester, you'll hear from each school.
Thank you, Mr. Booder. Uh, so you, you should have in your package, it's probably a spreadsheet right there, kind of an outline of some of the things that I wanted to talk about, uh, tonight. Uh, first thing I wanna touch on is some of the accomplishments. Try to get there from reading. Some of the accomplishments that we achieved last school year.
Just turn it down.
So, uh, one of the first things that is, that we celebrated with our staff and our students on the first day of school and on opening day was what, what we accomplished last year as a school. And, you know, a couple, a couple of students and the staff, you know, this document right here, that's the most things that we've ever had in the seven years that I've been there, which is a good thing. We wanna continue to build on that. But we had a lot of great accomplishments by our, by our students last year, whether it be academic teams or athletic teams, uh, our clubs, you know, just a couple of things. We did have five governor scholars, we had two governor's schools for the art, one governor's school for the honors, we had one kid that's, that's gonna go, uh, this year to the Gattan Academy at West Virginia Tech to finish up their last year as a high school. Um, you know, we have 20 extra curriculum sports, we have 20 clubs, uh, we had two members of, uh, of all-state theater, we have one all-state band member, and we had 11 kids that achieved 31 or higher than the ACT. So that's just a few of the highlights. I mean, we could talk about that for, for a lot of time. I don't wanna, don't wanna spend that much time on that. But it is, as the, as the board says on that, on that PowerPoint slide, you know, it is an exciting time to be a Titan. Next, uh, our school goals and priority plans. We always focus with our, with our students every year and, you know, we have three main goals. You know, we want to work to make, uh, you know, Mercer County High School, uh, a place where we always compete. You know, that's, that's, that's something we talk about all the time in school. It's our walls, uh, it's our stationery. Uh, we wanna be competitive in everything that we attempt, you know, and that's academics, extra curriculums, athletics. Um, we wanna be, do the best that we can and then be competitive in everything that we attempt there. The second goal that we always have up is we want to continue to make our students post-secondary ready, you know, for no matter what they do when they graduate, whether that's going to college, going to a technical school, going into the military, or just joining the workforce. We want our students to have the skills necessary to be successful, uh, whatever they intend to do, uh, after they graduate. And the third, the third goal that we have is we wanna create a school culture where our students have high expectations in all aspects of the, of the high school experience. And we feel like if, if, if the culture is right and we're always competing in everything that we do, that the results are gonna speak for themselves, you know? So that's, that's kind of where we are there. With our priority plan, and this is something that, you know, we started a couple of years ago, we have three goals this year that, uh, that we want to make sure that we, uh, attempt to accomplish. And last year, the priority plan that we put forward, we were able to achieve all three of those goals. So I was real proud of our staff and students for being able to, to achieve all those goals. But we're always looking to improve our quality of instruction through rigor and best practices. And we measure that through different walkthroughs. Our goal is for each administrator to have kids walkthroughs a week, which sometimes that can be very challenging depending on what's going on during the week. But if we're not in the classroom seeing what's going on, it makes it difficult for us to kind of keep a, to keep a, a breadth of, of what is more known at school. So, uh, we, we're always looking for ways to improve our quality of instruction. We're also looking this year to reduce our number of course failures. You know, that's one main difference between high school and middle school is, you know, some of the courses that our students fail are graduation requirements, which causes them to have to repeat those, which puts a strain on our master schedule and the courses that we're able to offer to our students. So we're gonna try to reduce those, uh, course failures by 20% or more. And then the third goal is we're trying, always trying to reduce our number of major referrals, uh, by 5%. In the six years that I've been there, our referrals have gone down, so we're hoping to continue to, for them to go down. So that's kind of our priority plan, is our family school here. Uh, we also have a, a profile that's listed on our school website that just kind of gives you, uh, just a brief synopsis basically of everything that we offer at the high school. I'm not gonna take time to go through that, but it is listed on our, on our high school website. It just kind of, kind of goes over some of our accomplishments and some of the things that we offer for our students, uh, at Mercer County Senior High School. One thing that I'm very proud of is our active qualifying that we got started this year. It's been a long time coming. Uh, we started working on that last year. We saw it in another school in. And, uh, so we got that cleared up over the summer. Uh, it's, if you're in the high school, it's, it's kind of, when you walk from the cafeteria up towards the auditorium, it's right there before you get to the back there, it's on that wall there. And we have, uh, we have a separate plaque for all of our graduating classes from the year that the merge took place, so 2006, 2007, all the way up to our current, uh, graduating class began in 2023. And of course, we'll add that each and every year to continue that. So we've gotten a lot of positive feedback on that, recognizing those great academic accomplishments that kids have, have attempted and achieved over the last 16 years. Our, another thing that kind of goes along with that is helping our tracking, our post-secondary readiness, uh, and trying to improve that rate. And we do that, we have a graduation, graduate tracking tool for all of our seniors, juniors, and, and we're starting to do our sophomores as well this year, just so we can, we can develop a relationship with all of our administrators and counselors, we did hit those kids. And, uh, we sit down with them and this, this just gives us a chance to be able to make sure that no one kind of slips through the cracks as far as maybe not having the course that they need to graduate. It also allows us to be able to keep track on how they are going to become post-secondary ready because there are many different avenues through which that could take place. So this is a tool that we started last year and I think it really paid dividends, um, with our post-secondary readiness score, which obviously is not out yet, but we feel really good about where that score will be when those scores are made public here in the next month or so. Dual credit opportunities. We are very, very fortunate for the size of school that we have to be able to off, offer the number of dual credit classes that we have. And we offer those classes through Eastern, uh, Hamilton University, Harrisburg, Murray and BCT City. And one document that I have on the screen right there kind of shows you the number of students we have enrolled at those different, in those different dual credit classes at those four universities, and it also looks at the numbers that we have in our AP program. Now, I will be honest, our AP program numbers have gone down in the last four or five years, and I think the reason for that is because we've got more and more kids that are choosing to go into a credit route versus the AP. But we still offer, for the school our side, we still offer quite a few classes with our AP program. So we're always attempting to, uh, to, you know, I guess you'd say push our kids to take more rigorous academic course loads and with the more dual credit opportunities that we have, uh, many of them are taught in the school, we have some that are taught at the CU Harrisburg campus, but this year with our partnership with Eastern, we're able to offer many more courses that, that the students can take online, uh, through Eastern, they can reverse. So the, the courses that they can take at Eastern are almost limitless with the number of courses that, that they can take as they, uh, intend to, to, uh, take more dual credit opportunities. ACT, a lot of people say, well, ACT's kind of going out, and it is, it is a lot different than it has been the last seven or eight years, but it's still important, it's still tied to keys money, it's still tied to scholarships, even though some colleges are not really looking at it as far as, um, it used to, like they used to, but we still feel like it's very important for our kids. Uh, we have, uh, an ACT plan that we use during their ninth, tenth, eleventh, and twelfth grade year. Uh, we've got, uh, about 100 seniors, uh, seniors, uh, the State of Kentucky Department of Education is offering our seniors to do, take the ACT, uh, in October, it's actually on October 3rd, free of charge. We have about 100 seniors that are, that are taking them upon that offer, which is good. And then I want to thank you all for, for offering it for our juniors as well on October 28th, which is the master test date. We have about 100 juniors that are gonna take advantage of that before they take the ACT, uh, in March, which is mandated by the KDP. So our juniors will get two opportunities for two free ACTs during this school year as we prepare to help them, uh, you know, get as much keys money as possible, which opens up more for scholarship opportunities. Uh, goal setting, we feel like the goal setting, whether it be with the ACT or with our KSA testing, is crucial. You know, if, if a kid doesn't have a goal as to what they want to accomplish, more than likely it's not going to be accomplished. So we feel like our goal setting that we've been in place for the last couple of years is really paying dividends, and I put a couple of sample sheets in there, that we, uh, we talk to our students before they take the ACT, we talk to our students before they take KSA, and we make sure that, that they understand the importance of what they're doing and how it can impact them financially, you know, like I said earlier with KSA, and just, and how it can impact our school as well through our accountability system. Um, and we were really looking forward to the, to our results, which we had, we also worked ourselves, but we really think that some of the, uh, intentional plans that we made in this last school year is gonna pay off when those test scores get turned out. The last thing I wanna talk about once again is, is all of this is based upon our staff and the best practices that they're using in the classroom. If they're not using the best practices and they're not getting entered in the classroom, then all the stuff that I've talked about here briefly is not gonna, not gonna take place. So, uh, we're really excited about the staff that we have, we're excited about the school year. It's been a great school year. It's hardly been a while I've been in school for six weeks, but we are, when we get the ground running and we haven't slowed down yet, you know, and I don't think this is gonna slow me down into a school against Alabama, of course, but as, as we did, you're well aware, we're already being prepared for the next school year before this school year is even out. So there really has been downtime at the high school as we, as we make those plans. I would like to close by saying, you know, a wise man would say that a goal without a plan is just a wish. I feel like that we have solid plans in place at the high school and I think that, that we're gonna see the results of those solid plans when our accountability results come out, hopefully in the next, next month or so. So, do you have any questions?
Spencer, I wanna say, first of all, Greg Ford, but I love the wall thing. I think that is wonderful. I'm glad to see over the last three years that that plaque has grown. We may have to get better plaques, uh, which would be a wonderful thing, but I have talked to some other guys and have seen that and have already made mention that I'm, I'm getting up there. And that's, that's, I mean, for this to just be revealed and be promoted, I think you're getting that much traction on it, that's great.
Yeah, like I said, it's been, it's been a good talking for, you know, I've had a lot of people that have come in for volleyball games, have made note of it, uh, you know, and, and I think it's, I think it's really something good for us. We're always trying to promote our students, whether it be through academics or athletics. You know, we've got some athletic record boards that are gonna be up shortly also in the cafeteria. We've got a trophy qualifying basically that's, that's hopefully in the next three or four weeks it will be finished. So any way that we can promote the good things that our students are doing, we want to make sure to get that out there for, for not only our students to see as they walk the halls every day, but also for the public to see when they come into our school and everything else. Anything else? All right, thank you all.
Thanks. Superintendent Ford, Mr. Page.
Just to piggyback, what Mr. Page was saying is that, uh, probably, hopefully, right around the next board meeting, uh, probably, probably the day after the test scores will be released in the public, so you'll be able to speak about those. The news that we're doing, and, uh, they're already compiling the proficient and distinguished list, you know, so if a student made, last year, a student made all proficient distinguished on the test, uh, then we took them down to lunch to the Japanese Steakhouse and they really enjoyed that. I know a lot of them see me in the hallways and they're like, I'm going back to lunch with you, are you gonna take me back to lunch this year? As long as you make all proficient distinguished, I will. Uh, so we're looking forward to doing that again. Those are just right now. Uh, like, like Mr. Taylor said, the juniors are gonna take their ACT next month, and then again, a lot of school districts don't pay for one ACT free or for, you know, the fault. But we do here at Mercer County, and that's, that's a great offering for our parents to save them a little money, and hopefully their kid scores well on it and they can get some keys money out of it. And I know he, he said something about a lot of colleges don't take, don't even look at ACT scores anymore. That's a misconception, that's two kids that are in college or a parent is two, having two kids in college. That is true, except for when you start looking at keys money and scholarship money, competitive scholarships are based on the ACT and GPA, so, uh, we, we need to make sure our parents don't forget that. We're starting, Mr. McAllister and I have started doing walkthroughs, where our goal is in three weeks, it may take us four weeks, but I think three weeks will be there, seeing in every classroom in the district. We started at Kingville School, their, their, their staff is doing a great, great job. Uh, we finished up at the high school yesterday or day before, uh, well, matter of fact, today, because we had to go back and get, get a teacher that was on a field trip, uh, but, uh, they are doing great things at the high school. And then we started the intermediate today and got in, I think it was 16 classrooms today. So, uh, there are some great, great things going on in our classrooms, our, our parents would be very, very proud of where they're sending their kids to, to get their education. But again, we should be wrapping up with the intermediate, maybe tomorrow, and then getting into the elementary school after that. So, and again, we've, it's great to just go around and see young people just learning at a high level and seeing our teachers in action as well. I know a lot of, we had a lot of, lot of meetings, of course, last night we had a working session, and you all saw the work we've done in the exterior of the new elementary, we've had the interior, the kitchen, there's been a lot of work on the new elementary school trying to get the design ready and rolling for the bid coming out, for the bid, which will be our, the big year. Tonight, we've got our second SRO, School Resource Officer, we've got him hired and sworn in, down, down in the judge executive's office, and that's Mr. Brian Allen. So if he'd stay in the wave, I know you all probably know, know him, he was the chief of the, please. So we've gotten now two from the Harrisburg Police Department, of course, officer sheetmakers, chief sheetmakers with him, uh, we hired last, last spring. So again, we're, we're, you know, glad and welcome to both of you, but glad to have both of you for our school, for our kids, and I know, you know, it feels a lot safer for our parents when you send a kid, when they send their kids to a school that has an SRO in their school building. I also want to say thank you to our county and our judge executives, Sarah Steele, for selling us. We've been looking for two, because they'd like to, instead of walking everywhere between the schools, they'd like to have a, a police cruiser, but you were, as you all know, getting a car and then putting cages in it, all the lights all over it, and getting it to be a police cruiser is really, really expensive. So our county and judge executives, Sarah Steele, had two police cars that they did not need anymore because they're gonna, uh, they're gonna get new ones, uh, for the SUV version of those. So they sold us each one of them for a dollar, I thought that was the best deal going, right? Two dollars for two police cars. Uh, so we just want to say thank you to them for, for, again, and they said we would love to do that because it's for our kids. And the line.
Me three would be great, but two dollars all the time.
We're paying, paying for that. But again, thank you to them. I've got good news on our new buses. It's been a year and a half since we ordered our second round of six new buses, and they're all in finally. Uh, so they'll, five of them, they gotta do some inspection, so five will be here on the road tomorrow. Uh, so that gives us, that gives us 12 new ones over the last 18 months or so. We're about to order three more new ones for this coming, uh, May, June, July, somewhere around there, more likely, hopefully, they'll be delivered in. So that'll get our fleet, once we're there, and that'll get our fleet nice and new, like I said, we'll have 13 buses now with air conditioning on them, all of the, all of the upgrades that you can have, so our, our students will ride on some very nice buses going to school now. Uh, as you probably noticed, if you went around the, uh, school district, I know Mr. Carleton's here, he's done a lot of, of resealing of our, our parking lots, and Jay Anderson has done some striping for us, so we, we want to say thank you all then for getting all that done, it makes our, our outside of our school buildings look much, much better when they're sealed, striped, nice, and green lines. I've been working with the city and the county on, uh, our school traffic lights, our school zones going up over the road, I know there's some, some issues with those, we're gonna get those fixed, we're having another meeting Friday down at Kingville School, tennis courts down there, looking at those flashing lights and trying to get all that, apparently there's an article in the newspaper a week or two ago about our first meeting, we're gonna try to look at some options for that. And also, we're starting for traffic flow for our new elementary school, so not only what we have currently on over the road, and I appreciate the city and the, and the city police and the sheriff, so they've been down the school zones lately, and they, it looks like they're, I guess they're writing tickets or they're writing more than one ticket, but they had some people over, or, or speeding through the school zone down there on over the road, so I appreciate that. And like I said, that's just for the safety of our kids and everybody down there. So, again, we'd like to see everybody go release, we might have lower, down, over the road to help us out. And then our first superintendent advisory council meeting, so we classified kids, our students and teachers, will be this Thursday, so we're looking forward to getting that done with the students. We'll meet every other month throughout the summer.
Good report, sir, thank you very much. Uh, next, consent agenda, there are several items on there, a lot of out-of-state trips. Does anybody have any questions about any of those? Mr. Bryant, you all going back to Chicago?
Going back to Chicago. I'm not, yeah, it is a really good trip, I haven't been, but, uh, Ms. Wilson's gonna go with him.
Do you need to discuss anything? Questions?
If anybody wants to shake, they'll have to get those trips.
All right, if, uh, no questions, can I have a motion to approve consent agenda?
I can.
Mr. Montgomery makes a motion, may I have a second, please? Mrs. Frances, the second, on the table. Don't have any action items for the discussion. So we do have a couple of items for roll call vote, uh, we do have a couple of leaves, uh, there's asking for approval of two unpaid leaves, I don't think there's anything else we need to add, that can be shown today. And I assume everybody's had an opportunity to look at those, um, so if anyone has any discussion, that can I give a motion to approve both leaves?
I'll make a motion.
Okay, Mr. Prue makes a motion, may I have a second, please? Second, Mr. Gager, roll call, sir.
District one, Amber Frances.
Yes.
District two, Larry Yeager.
Yes.
District three, Billy Montgomery.
Yes.
District four, Cliff Prue.
Yes.
District five, Randy Phillips.
Yes. And our last item for roll call vote is the warranty budget. Amber, and gentlemen, as of that event, discussing all this in detail last time around the working sessions.
Yeah, I really go with everything, nothing has changed through five times, I'm fully comfortable with it. Um, but basically, you know, total revenue we have, that 27.7 million, and that's an increase of 1.74 million from the 10-bit budget, that includes a beginning balance of 6.1 million, and that includes the tax revenue may increase if you all go to non-awest, and it does include an adjustment to our seat revenue that we talked about last night. On the expense side, those are set at 24.7 million, and that is an increase compared to the 10-bit budget, a lot of that is due to the salary increases, that kind of thing, just some random line items that we've noticed that have increased, um, actuals last year and we needed to adjust. Um, the contingency, we always wanted to be at a 12, you know, 12% or higher, and this one is at a 12.16%, and that is an increase of 2.68% compared to the 10-bit budget. This does also include $150,000 to decide for the future construction projects, and there are some summary sheets attached, if you wanted to review that anymore, but do you have any questions?
Questions? Uh, if no further questions, can I have a motion for Prue?
I can.
Mr. Montgomery makes a motion, may I have a second, please?
I'll second.
Mr. Prue, second, roll call, sir.
District one, Amber Frances.
Yes.
District two, Larry Yeager.
Yes.
District three, Billy Montgomery.
Yes.
District four, Cliff Prue.
Yes.
District five, Randy Phillips.
Yes. Okay, if nothing further to discuss, may I please have a motion for adjournment?
I will.
Mr. Montgomery, motion, may I have a second? You got it, Mr. Yeager? Second, Mr. Yeager, all the same. Need a adjournment, thank you.